Good morning, the council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
Voting is now open, please mark yourself on, uh, please mark yourself present using the device. Okay, I will now call on those who have not yet marked themselves present. Alderman Hopkins, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Dowell, not present in chambers. Alder Person Robinson, not present in chambers. Alderman Hall, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Harris, not present in chambers. Alderman Beal, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Lee, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Coleman, not present in chambers. Alderman Curtis, not present in chambers. Alderman O'Shea?
Here.
Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderwoman Taylor, not present in chambers. Alderman Mosley, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Tabarez, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Scott, Alderwoman Scott is present. Um, Alderman Siccho Lopez, Alderman Siccho Lopez is present. I'm sorry, you were marked, sorry about that. Alderperson Fuentes, not present. Alderman Burnett, not present. Alderwoman Cruz, not present in chambers. Alderman Cardona, not present in chambers. Alderman Wagasback, not present in chambers. Alderman Conway, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Mitz, Alderwoman Mitz is present. Alderman Spazato, not present in chambers. Alderman Riley, not present in chambers. Alderman Lawson, not present in chambers. Alderman Gardner, Alderman Gardner is present. Alderwoman Silverstein, not present in chambers. Alderman Beal, Alderman Beal, present. Alderman Beal is present in chambers. Okay, voting is now closed.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum, there are twenty-nine members that are present, so we do have a quorum. There are five alders that have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule 59, and they are as follows. Hopkins, Robinson, Cruz, Harris, and Mosley, can I get a motion to approve their remote participation and have them added to the roll call? It's been moved, all those in favor, Madam Clerk, could we verify that these alders are indeed with us remotely?
Yes, Alderman Hopkins?
Present, good morning.
Good morning, Alderman Hopkins is present. Alderperson Robinson?
Alderman Robinson is present.
Alderman Robinson is present. Alderwoman Harris? Harris is not present. Alderman Mosley? Alderman Mosley is not present. Alderwoman Cruz?
Here.
Alderwoman Cruz is present.
Okay, all those in favor, for those who have verified their remote availability, all those in favor of allowing them to participate remotely, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. The invocation will be delivered by Pastor Philip Watson from Near West Vineyard Church.
Amen, and thank you for this honor. Hallelujah. If we can, as many people as possible, can we just hold hands, grab arms or something in an act of unity in this city? Jesus, we decree that you are great. Jesus, we decree that you are high and lifted up, and your train fills the temple. Lord, we decree today that the city of Chicago is in your hands, for you said that our times are in your hands. And so we pray today, Jesus, let the doors be open to the spirit of wisdom to be released in this atmosphere, to bring about collaboration and unity. Lord, we cry out today for your mercy, for your mercy is new every morning. Anybody that is out there that prays, I want you to pray with me right now. Hallelujah. Lord, we say today, let your mercy be released over this city. Lord, we say let hope begin to arise in this city. Let the spirit of unity be released, God. Let the spirit of wisdom be released upon our mayor, be released upon our council people. Lord, we pray for your agenda for this city to be done. Father, we pray that as wisdom is crying out at the gates, that we would hear the call of wisdom today, and what wisdom is speaking. And so we say, wisdom come forth. We say, wisdom speak at the gates. We say, let the doors be open to wisdom. Father, we pray today for collaborative efforts in the name of Jesus. Let every head of pride be cut off, and let the spirit of humility and unity be released, oh God, that things may be able to get done. We decree peace over this city. We decree hope over this city. We decree love over this city. We decree mercy over this city. Father, we bless you, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you, you may be seated. This is the portion of the meeting for public comments.
The council, the council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been made and submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Our first speaker today is Chanel Lane.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Chanel Lane. I will be speaking on the budget for the Plow the Sidewalks program. I believe we, as all citizens of this city, will benefit from the Plow the Sidewalk program. I, as a wheelchair user, think it's imperative that we have the sidewalks cleaned during the winter months to get around. This goes for disabled people, mobile, blind, hearing disabled people. Singers, they can't do what they used to do, so they're not able to plow their sidewalks, and they may not have anyone to do it for them, and because of their limited budgets, may not also be able to pay someone to do them, to do it for them. Not to mention, if they slip and fall on the ice, it could be very dangerous for not only them, but their families and increase in their financial responsibility. Parents of children who have to walk to school every day, or even just want to play, have the risk of falling or not being able to get around properly because of the snow. Property owners aren't going to look out for the citizens by themselves. We all have fines in order, but they don't pay the fines, and we also have to remember about vacant lots and buildings. The city's responsibilities to care for its citizens during bad and dangerous weather do not end with the streets. The city can find the money for this. Maybe if the city spent more money on the safety of all of its residents than the upkeep of flowers, more specifically in the downtown area, I believe you all could make it happen. Put yourselves in the shoes of the residents I mentioned. Put your family members in the shoes of the residents I mentioned. Make sure that you all not only look in your hearts, but look in your duties and responsibilities as the city council of the city of Chicago. Think about how you all are blessed to be able to get where you all were today, and that you all have the tools and the, and the mean how and the transportation ability to do so. Consider those same issues for the people of Chicago who walk these sidewalks every day, for those people who may have been trying to get to buses or trains, who can't even make it there because of the snow, and then they can't get to work, and then they can't get to school, which prevents them to be, from being conductive members of this society. Please, look into your hearts, your head, and your know-how to please come up with money for the budget of the Plow the Sidewalk program. We appreciate you, your service and your work, and I know you would do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Danielle Carter.
So Brandon, you and all these Democratic mayors out here and governors, y'all talking about crashing out for these illegals, right? You all sit up there and say it, you would not allow Trump to come in here and get these illegals. Yeah, you can smile, we're in a billion dollar deficit, and you spent half of our money, so half of that on illegals. You campaigned, you campaigned, and doubled down that you would not raise property taxes. I ain't gonna do that, you campaigned, went around doing that. And here we are right now. You wanted to raise our taxes, three hundred million, they shut it down. Now we back here for a hundred and fifty million. Okay, see, this is what we asking now. Since you want to crash out, some of y'all say y'all willing to go to jail for it. Trump, Tom Holman, make example at this negro right here first. Please come here first, because you know what, we gonna help you. We want to forensic.
Ma'am, I would ask that you, should you keep her? Hold on a second, stop her time, stop her time. Just a second, just a second, stop her time. Ma'am, I would ask at you, if you want to continue speaking, if you want to continue speaking, you have to make sure that your language is appropriate, okay? All right.
We got Alex.
Okay, you can, you can begin her time again.
You gonna spend our tax dollars to go, Michael Robert Reed, you gonna, you said to take Trump to court to protect these illegals. You said you gonna spend our tax dollars to take Trump to court to protect these illegals if they try to come in your, in your, uh, here, in your district. And then you said, yeah, they, all of y'all, in cahoots with each other to do it. Okay, so now we about to make y'all famous. We gonna let all y'all constituents know who y'all ratting for, that y'all wouldn't spend our tax dollars to protect illegals and to get them legal services. So, that's what we doing, that's cool, because we about to make all of y'all aldermen's famous. Y'all think this ass gonna rat, I think not. Flip Chicago red, we not playing.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is-
Excuse me, just a second. If you continue to shout, I will clear the chamber. That is your only warning. Okay, next person, please.
Our next speaker is Jessica Jackson.
So, Mayor Brandon Johnson, I was always taught that a man's word is his bond. I was always told that if you can't take a person at their word, you can't take them at nothing, right? So, because I was raised that way, I stand by my word. And it's two words I gave you. The first word was, we coming for them seats. And we are, and we are. The second word I gave is that we was gonna make y'all famous. And we gonna make y'all famous, starting with Famous Friday. Every Friday at six o'clock, we gonna be on Zoe's YouTube. Tune in, Zoe Lee, and we gonna get you one at a time, starting with, gonna pull your name out of a hat, and we gonna see who is the lucky person who gets to go first. Let's see who's down here. Drum roll, please. This week, Friday at six o'clock, featured on the Zoe Lee YouTube, is Alder Person, because I'm not getting caught up in pronouns and junk, Alder Person, Jesse Fuentes. Yay! She's not here, but her people are. Y'all get the word to her. Make sure y'all tune in, so you know what to expect when it's your turn. For everybody who sat here and ain't helping me get my property, you gonna sit up here and watch them take my stuff from me? For every black person I know that get their property taken, that's a seat, that's gone. You can believe that, you can believe that. I hate that your name wasn't pulled first. That Mary Richardson Laurie, we gonna get to her too. We gonna get to them commissioners, we getting to everybody who sat back and watching me be stressed out about my stuff. Tell Jesse Fuentes, tune in, we about to make her famous. Boom!
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Howard.
No, he ain't gonna do it. He don't help black people.
Good morning, Mayor Johnson, city councils, and the citizens of Chicago. To the taxpayers, residents, and special interest group, and all who wants to see Chicago thrive, and all who wants to see property taxes to go down or not pay them, or all who wants to see this city have a better quality of life, can you please stand with me and support me with this? Thank you for your dedication to, and, and the future of the city. To the mayor and city council, if the citizens of Chicago were to come together and support your 2025 budget, and also contribute four point five billion dollars to the city and four point five billion dollars to the county, would you agree to this initiative? I know you can't answer questions. This proposal represents a unified effort by the citizens to address budget shortfall and support the city development. Are you open to accepting and working with the people on such an initiative called the People Fund? And to the citizens, to my federal citizens in the audience, I now turn to you. You are the backbone of the city, and your voice matters. You reside in one of the fifty wards of Chicago, and you have entrusted these elected officials to represent your interests. I have a question for you. If the mayor of Chicago and the council were to work with the county president, Tony Prickwinkle, to end the annual tax and scavenger sale, approve the People Fund, which is transactional tax, waive property taxes, reverse homes that were taken from the tax sale, would you support the budget proposal in return for these changes? Okay, if you are willing to consider this, I ask you to join me in the hallway after this, by the elevators, and I will finish telling you about the People Fund. There's, there I will explain this plan in detail, and how it would transform our city and county. Now, Mayor Johnson, you do have this proposal, I don't know if you got it yet, you probably having this fine, uh, check with, um, Ms. Kennedy, but this proposal is a great proposal, and it will bring and help the city, and it definitely will help the people from losing their home, because without their homes, we do not exist, and the city don't exist. And another thing, Alderman, you guys are elected by us, we are the people. We down here, we want you to represent us. I hope that you guys have our interest. So, again, after everything is over with, come in the hallway, and I'm gonna explain what we call the People Fund. It's the coldest, the coldest economic initiative ever. When I, when I created my directors, I'm like economists now, but anyway.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Tiara Conway.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Tiara Conway, I'm here to speak about actually police torture, or, as y'all say, prosecutorial misconduct. Yet again, this is another budget crisis. We demand no cuts in transparency, no cuts, we demand no cuts on accountability and transparencies, but instead, cut the vacant positions. We should not be funding any criminals. Mayor Brandon Johnson, I need you to look into this case. Ramon Banks has been held against his will for over two years at the Cook County Jail. We have Officer Kevin Quinn and Miguel Jackson, who intentionally made up false allegations against him. We have Father Bryce, the Assistant State's Attorney, who approved it. They loud and stated Mr. Banks made fatal movement when they approached the car. The body cam clearly shows that Mr. Banks was instructed to raise down the window. He's the passenger, why would he turn towards his left if the window is to his right? They also loud and stated Miguel Anderson, he's the driver officer, said that he seen a weapon in plain view directly behind the passenger seat. How could you see that, and you're the driver officer? We need, we need help with this case. I understand, to Terry free someone, you have to have a reasonable of suspicion that a crime is at foot, or someone is armed and danger. The officer have to have, must be able to articulate specific facts which led them to suspect a crime is at foot, or someone is armed and dangerous. These policemen that you guys is putting out here, they not upload, upholding the law, they actually violating them. We need these people to be held accountable, because lack of accountability can create a toxic environment like what we experiencing now. We have so much going on in this city, where it's a lot of innocent people which pled guilty because they fighting against all you guys. This is wrong. I really need you to look into this case. His next court date is December eighteenth. We're demanding this case to be thrown out. You have lack of probable cause, they violated his rights, you have prosecutorial misconduct, and they have insufficient evidence. We have on body cam, the officer telling me that he had to put something in my car. We don't do that here. I asked him, what is there you have to put in my car? He tell me I'm not under arrest, that he-
Thank you very much for your comments, however, your time has expired. Our next speaker this morning is Ms. Lawrence.
Good morning, all in the city council that came today, and for those who didn't come today that usually block up this room, yes. Let's talk about vows, when you all are getting up there doing those prayers. Let's talk from a Christian point of view. Numbers thirty-two, Ecclesiastes five-five, James five-twelve, Matthew five-thirty-three and five-thirty-seven. You know what those are, all our Brandon Johnson, they're called vows that you make before God. You get on national TV and make these statements that raising property taxes is not one of the things that you can do, because it's the lazy way of doing things. So, are you now lazy? Are you now lazy? It's the question, because you're not holding to any of these. And as we also listen to you, or basically watched you while William J. Kelly stumbled and pummeled you in a press conference, and you standing there trembling at all the questions that he asked from a citizen's perspective. Now, let's get down to Tom Holman, and eight USC, thirteen twenty-four, different editions of nineteen ninety-four, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two, about you harvesting aliens, and you so strong about protecting those aliens, but you won't do nothing for the US citizens. We are the ones who pay your salaries. Salaries! Let me accentuate on that. But yet, you want to overlook us like we don't exist. Well, you're not gonna exist for the next election, because there's a ten-year prison sentence when you want to stand up here for those illegals. See, when I come, I told you I'm bringing the facts, and on the back of my shirt, I'm gonna let you read it before I walk away, to let you know that I'm not about your games, your jokes, and your prizes, because when you ask silly questions, you gonna get silly answers. You know, you should know that statement, right? Well, you haven't answered the question yet. William J. Kelly came to you with plenty of them, and what happened with that? Only thing you could talk about is your wife saying her first name? Who cares? I don't, because number one, I never voted for you. Number two, Lori Lightfoot either, because I'm never, I have not been a Democrat for nearly two decades. So therefore, you wouldn't have been my choice, and you even let Valis show your evil in those debates. So here's the message for you. Nope, not today.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is George Blakemore.
Brandon Johnson didn't bring this doo-doo here, it's been here. Old man Daley, Harold Washington, Richard Daley, they live with. This man did not bring this doo-doo in this room. It's been, it's been here, and you been voting for this doo-doo too. But maybe some of you have, and maybe, I was the one too. I was under the impression that I could vote for a candidate, and I could vote somebody in. You can't vote nobody in. The way this is set up, is a group of people slate who they want, and then you vote for those they slate. This is all red, they're all Democrats, all of, and it been this way. So some of y'all get up here and spin this mic and holler, it's been this way. This is nothing new under the sun. So, the office got a raise, and, and, uh, the mayor got a raise, so the teachers say they want a raise, and, and, and the farmers want a raise. Everybody wants something, what do you want? I want this chamber to be diverse, have many different political parties and different viewpoints. It's all the same, sixty-nine in each other, all of them, the black ones, the white ones, the Hispanic, all are Democrats! Now, how are you gonna get real, all of them, all of them, and make it a, and make it happen, make it work? I don't think you gonna do it just hollering, go red. Uh-huh, I, I think you gonna have to use some, to have some strategic aims to, to clean this doo-doo up. This is old doo-doo. This doo-doo go back a long time, and, and, and you don't smell it now, because it's dry, but you can see the results of it. You can, all of them, so the press, all of them, they all in this together. A revolution to change this system and clean it up and have a real democratic system, a democracy where you have different points of views. Everybody here is the same doo-doo. All of them. Have you ever seen a bad?
Thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker, our next speaker this morning is Melvin Bailey.
How you doing, Mayor and City Council?
Good morning.
Been a long time since I've been coming down here. But, again, I'm coming down here, Mayor, and I want you to hear this. We want to enforce TBI, Trouble Building Initiative. There's over fifteen thousand vacant and abandoned buildings surrounded around the city of Chicago and they trapped in our community. If we, I'm, I got started petition, I'm getting twenty-six signatures from Aldermen's so we can turn, I talked to several Alderman's individuals. As you can see, I started, they already signed. So what we want to do is take them vacant and abandoned buildings, rehab them, keep our young men in our community. Because if we keep them in the community, now we can tell them to put down their drug, the, the gun, now they don't have to take that car, running it to downtown, and now they don't have to kill another police officer. Is we talking about reducing all crime? No, but we're gonna reduce some of the crime. We'll reduce some of the crimes with these vacant and abandoned buildings in our community. And just like Alderman Lopez said, maybe we need to have a committee meeting on it. We need to call Corporation Counsel. Already talked to Judge Murray, already talked to Judy Friedland. Judge Murray is the Housing Court, Judy Friedland is the Commissioner. She said, Mel, we got a bunch of them. But Corp Counsel are holding the properties hostage like they, like it's their property. But this is our community. And I'm tired of seeing our young kids coming down every time you look at the news. Look, we just had a police officer killed in Oak Park, police officer killed in Chicago. Come on now, all you smart people down here. All the degrees you guys have, you mean to tell me we can't take a simple problem? Now, here's a vacant and abandoned list that they sent me. Here's some agree-order demos. They've been on the agree-order demo list since two thousand fourteen and they still standing. That's ten years. You mean to tell me all these educated people down here, we cannot find a, a solution to this problem? At least we can give these kids some hope because every time they call me or talk to me, do you have a job for me? That's all they wanna do is work? They don't want, it's like, bro, I don't wanna grab a sword, but I got to. Ah, man, they like, I don't wanna big bro, I don't wanna man. I'm like, they've called me, I got, they say, you know, I'm gonna tell you this, y'all could take this. When they call, I tell them have a job, know what they tell me? Just look at the news. That's first thing they tell me, just watch the news. And they serious because I watch the news. The first thing you hear, I say, oh, man, I couldn't save them. I can't save all of them, but we can save some of them. So I really appreciate if you guys help us with this problem because we can, you know, we can most definitely solve some of it. Some of it. Come on now, who all say, I'm, I'm looking for signatures. I need twenty-six signatures to give to the mayor so we can force Corporation Counsel. I can't wait to talk to Corp Counsel in the budget meeting, Department of Law. It's, this is a, this is a very big problem. But I want to say thank you to Jason Urban, thank you to the Housing Department because they allow us to start building on Madison and Hamlet, a small African-American company to build. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Mr. Cruz.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor. Today, I stand here as a concerned citizen to speak out against the leadership of Mayor Brandon Johnson, a leader whose actions and affiliations are doing a disservice to our once-great city. But before I do so, I'd like to thank Alderman Brendan Riley and Raymond Lopez and the other common sense Aldermen for holding firm on no property tax hikes and for their proposed headcount reductions. While the end of the budgetary cycle is near, we are just getting started in order to save our city, which is in financial crisis. Under the current mayor's administration, we've seen a disturbing trend. Mayor more concerned with pandering to special interest groups and non-taxpayers than with making the tough, necessary decisions to move this city forward. Mayor Johnson's leadership can be defined by demagoguery, fueled by progressive rhetoric and driven by a divisive agenda that plays to the lowest common denominator rather than striving for unity, fiscal responsibility, or the common good. We do not need progressive revenue initiatives. We have an addiction to spending and it must be fixed immediately. It's no secret that Brandon Johnson's ties to the CTU run deep. His political career from the start has been propped up by union support and now as mayor, it's clear that those ties come with a hefty price tag and put the CTU's interests above those of our children and taxpayers. The CTU, with its unwavering influence over local politics, has contributed to our insolvency. The president of the CTU recently tweeted, "We will put a force field around our children." This is lunacy and the definition of demagoguery. The CTS, for a couple of stats here, the CTS budget in twenty-ten was five-point-three billion dollars, roughly thirteen thousand dollars per student to educate. In the twenty-twenty-five budget, the budget for CPS is ten billion dollars or thirty-one thousand dollars per student. When is enough enough? That's the cost to go to the University of Illinois. The annual salaries of CPS employees have skyrocketed by over eight hundred million dollars since twenty-nineteen, all of which was funded by federal COVID, COVID funds, which are all now depleted and no longer coming. What's more troubling is the mayor's blatant disregard to address the rising costs of living, worsening infrastructure, and mounting public debt. His proposal to raise tax, property taxes was egregious and was lost by fifty, fifty-to-zero vote. He and his supporters refused to give in on the sanctuary status when we've spent over six hundred million dollars on migrants this year while Chicago is basically insolvent. Argentina's president, new president Javier Millay, took over an economy in twenty-twenty-three with triple-digit inflation, massive deficits, and widespread poverty, and he turned their economy around in less than one year. How did he do so? He cut over twenty billion dollars from government spending while, by eliminating departments and layoffs, and as a result, inflation has collapsed to three percent from over two-hundred percent, and GDP growth has reached sixteen percent in the latest quarter with a budget surplus. Chicago deserves better. We need leadership that puts our city's future above partisan interests and won't be held hostage to union interests. The current mayor won the twenty-twenty-three election by twenty-six thousand votes on thirty percent voter turnout. We need a mayor who will stand up to the special interests and focus on the.
Thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is David Mason.
Yeah, you remember me, Brandon Johnson, from the PBC meeting. And you know I'm standing on business. Here you are with another greedy property tax hike, trying to push the half lots to house your precious illegal immigrants. You told Trump you ain't gonna blink? Well, we ain't neither. You ain't above the law, and where you gonna run to when Trump pulls that trump card out on you? I will make it my duty to try to get my gun to pull my Operation Great Lord to a point of Chicago and lock all you crooked Democrats and judges up. And it's just like that.
Thank you very much for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers. Your time has signed up.
Very well, this concludes the public comment period. We don't have any resolutions. Next up, Communications.
Communications from this honor, the mayor, to the honorable, the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Chief Financial Officer, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding the Employee Charitable Contribution Program. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing and transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the Humboldt Park United Methodist Church redevelopment project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing and transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the Clear Court Apartments Development Project. Your favorable consideration of support, ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with BR Congress Owner LLC and Congress, Congress Theater NFP to provide TIF funds for improvements at the Congress Theater. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending the Belmont Central TIF Redevelopment Plan and Project to revise the expiration date. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with Hudson, Michigan Avenue Owner LLC to provide TIF funds for improvements at the Hudson House. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending the Belmont Central TIF Redevelopment Plan and Project to revise the expiration date. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with Hudson, Michigan Avenue Owner LLC to provide TIF funds for improvements at the Hudson House. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending the Englewood Neighborhood TIF Redevelopment Plan and Project to revise the expiration date. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending the Lake Calumet TIF Redevelopment Plan and Project to revise the expiration date. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending the Lawrence Broadway TIF Redevelopment Plan and Project to revise the expiration date. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Redevelopment, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending the Lawrence Kudzie TIF Redevelopment Plan and Project to revise the expiration date. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Redevelopment, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending the Peterson-Palaski TIF Redevelopment Plan and Project to revise the expiration date. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning, I transmit herewith an ordinance approving the budget and authorizing the execution of service agreements for specified special service areas. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of land needed for Taylor Street Bridge Improvement Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request the Director of Emergency Management and Communications, I transmit herewith a resolution authorizing the adoption of the Cook County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and associated city annex for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-nine planning cycle. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance resolution will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Public Safety. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to Community Development Commission. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I appointed Jared Walker as member of the Board of Health for a term effective immediately and expiring April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, to succeed Janet Y. Lynn, whose term has expired. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to the Chicago Police Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated, very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Police and Fire. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Notification of disapproval by Commission on Chicago Landmarks of Demolition Permit Application for Building at Twenty Thirty Forty-Seven South Michigan Avenue. Tabulated Statement of Returns and Proclamation Results of Canvas of Election Results for November Fifth, Twenty Twenty-Four General Election. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on October twenty-second, Twenty Twenty-Four, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on December second, Twenty Twenty-Four, but being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of Journal Proceedings of City Council, City of Chicago. I City Clerk Anna Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on October thirtieth, Twenty Twenty-Four, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on December second, Twenty Twenty-Four, but being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of Journal Proceedings of City Council, City of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that the call for special meeting and associated ordinance and comments related thereto, which were considered by the City Council at the special meeting held on November fourteenth, Twenty Twenty-Four, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on December second, Twenty Twenty-Four, but being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of Journal Proceedings of the City Council, City of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that various ordinance which were passed by the City Council on October thirtieth, Twenty Twenty-Four, regarding this refunding tax levies, budgets, and service provider agreements for special service areas two, three, four, five, seven, eight, ten, thirteen, six, and eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, dash, two, one, two, zero, one, four, twenty-nine, dash, twenty-fourteen, thirty-one, thirty-two, dash, twenty-twenty-four, thirty-four, thirty-five, dash, twenty-fifteen, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-two, forty-five, forty-seven, fifty-five, fifty-six, dash, twenty-twenty-two, fifty-nine, dash, twenty-twenty-two. Sixty-one, dash, twenty-twenty-three, sixty-two, sixty-nine, seventy-three, seventy-six, dash, twenty-twenty-four, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, which were requested to be published in special pamphlets or published in special pamphlet form on November twenty-second, Twenty Twenty-Four. I City Clerk Valencia also transmit herewith the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning Reclassifications of Particular Areas, referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks of Building Standards. Claims Against the City of Chicago, referred to the Committee on Finance. Prohibition of Sale of Retail Hemp Products to Persons Under Twenty-One Years of Age, referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Imposition of Three Percent Tax. What? Two committees being called that will go to rules. Which one was it, though? The prohibition of sale of retail hemp? Or claim? Was that the one? Was it the, was it the imposition of three percent tax on gross receipts or prohibition of sale? Who called it? Oh, under twenty-one years. Okay. Yeah, prohibition of sale, retail hemp product. Yep, two committees were called will go to rules. And you called health? Okay, he called health. Imposition of Three Percent Tax on Gross Receipts from Sale of Hemp Products Sold in City of Chicago, referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Two committees being called that will go to budget, or go to rules, sorry. Imposition of Three Percent Tax on Gross Receipts from Sale of Hemp Products Sold in City of Chicago, referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, will go to rules. Correction of September eighteenth, Twenty Twenty-Four, City Council Journal Proceedings, referred to the Committee on Committee and Rules. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications with the mayor and other city officers.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to be recorded as being present today and be counted towards quorum.
Very well, there are a number of Alders that wish to be recorded as present. Alderwoman Dow, Wagginback, Cardona, Conway, Harris, Riley, Lawson, Lee, Silverstein, Mosley, Tabarez, Spazado, Hall, Gardner. Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk, for adding those members to the roll call. Next up, our committee reports. Chair recognizes Finance Chairperson Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council. Reporting for the City Council Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on October twenty-eighth, Twenty Twenty-Four, the following item received a due-pass recommendation from the committee. A substitute ordinance concerning the execution of a redevelopment agreement and issuance of multifamily tax-exempt bonds and other financial assistance to Thrive Exchange LLC for the Thrive Exchange South Project located at Seventy-Nine Oh Five South Exchange Avenue in the Seventh Ward. The amount not to exceed six-point-seven million in Chicago Recovery Plan dollars and an amount not to exceed thirteen-point-one million in TIF and an amount not to exceed nineteen million, one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand in tax-exempt bonds. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by a roll call vote.
Very well, thank you. Members, please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The vote is now open. Please raise your hand if you need support. The voting is now open. I will now call on those who have not voted using the e-device. Alderman Hopkins, are you there?
Alderman Hopkins votes aye.
Alderman Hopkins votes aye. Alderman Robin... I'm sorry, Alderwoman Dow. Alderwoman Dow is aye. Alderman Robinson?
Alderman Robinson is a yes.
Robinson is a yes. Alderman Talafaro? Not present in chambers. Alderwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Cruz is an aye. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez? Not present in chambers. Alderman Ramirez Rosa? Ramirez Rosa not present in chambers. As all... Everyone who voted who wish? Okay. The voting is now closed.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk. There are 42 yays, zero nays. This matter is passed. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider?
Mr. President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. This motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report from the Finance Committee.
Very well, thank you, Madam Chair. Now for matters of the agreed-upon calendar, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
I've received from Clerk Andrea M. Valencia a total of 107 items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, tribulatory resolutions from the following alderpersons. Alderperson Hopkins, Alderperson Dow, Alderperson Robinson, Alderperson Hall, Alderperson Harris, Alderperson Quinn, Alderperson Lopez, Alderperson Coleman, Alderperson Tabarez, Alderperson Irving, Alderperson Cruz, Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderperson Conway, Alderperson Riley, Alderperson Lawson, Alderperson Gardner, Alderperson Clay, Alderperson Manah Hoppenworth, Alderperson Silverstein. I move these in the omnibus, Mr. President.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Now for new business. Clerk will call the wards beginning with the first. Those items are being prepared. Alderman Mitchell for the approval of the Journal? Alderman Mitchell for the approval of the Journal?
I am not aware of any corrections to the Journals from the October 22nd and October 30th, 2024 regular meetings and the November 14th, 2024 special meeting. I move that it be approved.
Very well, hearing no objections, so ordered. We will now return back to new business. Thank you, Alderman Mitchell.
Zoning amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities shall refer to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Laspada has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Laspada also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 17-7-0572 extending the boundaries of the Northwest Zone which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Laspada also has proposed ordinance for the transfer of funds within the First Ward Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Laspada also has proposed orders for a transfer of funds within the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Laspada also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapter 3-46 revising the boundaries of the Downtown Zone which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alderperson Dow has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 2537 South Wabash Avenue which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Robinson has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the Fourth Ward Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Yancey has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapter 17-13 regarding zoning administrator approval on special use applications which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Mitchell has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Chico has proposed ordinance for a street designation as Dennis E. Zavinsky, aka BBIs, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Chico also has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 10th Ward Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Lee has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code sections 4-60-022 and 4-60-023 to allow additional alcoholic liquor and packaged goods licenses on portions of South Wallace Street which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Quinn has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 13th Ward Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Gutierrez has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 14th Ward Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Lopez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance for the year 2025 regarding funding for acoustic gunshot detection technology which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Rodriguez has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Tabarez has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 23rd Ward Wage Allowance Account for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Fuentez has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-022 to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portions of West Armistice Avenue which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Fuentez also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-025 by restricting additional late-hour liquor licenses along portions of North Costner Avenue, North Cicero Avenue, North Pulaski Road, West Division Street, and West Armistice Avenue which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Burnett has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 955 West Grand Avenue which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Irvin has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at various locations which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Irvin also has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the Office of the Vice Mayor for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Wagisback has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Conway has proposed ordinance for the transfer of funds within the 34th Ward Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Conway also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 165 North Displayne Street which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023 to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West Diversey Avenue which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Ramirez Rosa also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as James Joseph Mulligan Way which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa also has proposed ordinance for reclassification of specified area shown on map number 7J and amendment of the municipal code section 17-3-0503D establishing West Fullerton Avenue from North Kimball Avenue to North Pulaski Road as a pedestrian street which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Viegas has proposed... Alderperson Viegas has proposed ordinance to call for hearings on the potential efficiencies in the City of Chicago's technology systems and processes which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderperson Spazado has proposed order for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023 to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of West Addison Street which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Spazado also has proposed order for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-022 to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Irving Park Road which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Nugent has proposed order for correction of amendment to section 4-60-023 of the municipal code to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of North Pulaski Road from West Argyle Street to West Foster Avenue which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Vasquez has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Vasquez also has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 40th Ward Wage Allowance Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Riley has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at various locations which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Riley also has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code Title IX by modifying section 9-100-020 establishing increased fines for parking-related violations in Central Business District which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Alderperson Riley also has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code section 2-45-155 required in the Department to publish quarterly reports of current balances of TIF districts which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alderperson Riley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023 to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West Randolph Street, North Whacker Drive, and West Washington Street which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Riley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023 to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of Columbus Drive and Whacker Drive which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Gardner has proposed order for a transfer of funds within the 45th Ward Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Gardner also has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the 45th Ward Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Clay has proposed ordinance for a street designation as Sharon Joklich Stanley Way which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Clay also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Slim Coleman Way which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Martin has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code... Amendment of the 2025 Budget Recommendations Regarding Staffing Positions with the Chicago Police Department which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Manah Hoppenworth has proposed ordinance for issuance of permits for signed signboards at 5937 North Broadway which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Hoppenworth also has proposed orders for a transfer of funds within the 48th Ward Wage Allowance Count for the year 2024 which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Haddon has proposed order for amendment of municipal code section 7-28-215 regarding permit fees for Type R recycling refuse containers which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Telefiero and others have a proposed resolution to urge the Budget Director of the Controller and the Chief Financial Officer to conduct comprehensive forward-looking assessments on the impact of impending Trump administration on the city's resources which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Conway and others have proposed order for amendment of municipal code, chapter 2-8, regarding annual reports of departmental operations. Alderperson... Which committee would you like it referred to?
The best budget operation.
The matter is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Rosa and others have a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapter 5-11, regarding the definition of material change in the terms of a contract for a just eviction which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building The pedestrian street designation for Fullerton Avenue that was introduced earlier and referred to the Committee on Zoning should be referred to the Committee on Zoning and not Transportation. This is a correction on a previous introduction. The matter that was corrected was an automatic introduction by Alderman Ramirez Rosa regarding the honorary street designation of James Joseph Mulligan Way which is referred to the Committee on Zoning rather than Transportation.
Regarding the pedestrian street designation.
Okay. Correction. The matter regarding the reclassification of specified area shown on map number 7J and the amendment of the municipal code section 17-3-0503D establishing West Fullerton Avenue from Kimball to Pulaski as a pedestrian street, the matter was... Is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Buildings, and Landmark Standards. Alderperson Coleman has proposed order for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-023, prohibiting the issuance of additional alcoholic liquor... Or allowing the issuance of alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West 51st Street which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Your Honor, that concludes the introduction of automatic matters.
Very well, thank you, sir. For unfinished business, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I am not aware of any unfinished business.
Very well, for miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
Well, except for the ordinance set in the date and time of the next meeting, I am not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Very well, for the date and time of the next meeting. Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk set in the date and time of the next two meetings.
Be it ordained by the City Council of City of Chicago, section 1, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, December 11th, 2024, beginning at 10:00 a.m., and on Friday, December 13th, 2024, beginning at 10:00 a.m., in the Council Chamber of the Second Floor and City Hall 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. This ordinance shall take effect and be forced in after its passage.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk. Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll-call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to go out of the regular order of business in order to conduct a public hearing on the proposed executive budget.
Very well, on the motion to go out of the regular order of business, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion passes. This time is now... Well, how might we do this? It is 11:35, so in order for this meeting to... Yeah. So this time is now, of course, dedicated for the... For this portion of the proposed budget meeting. If there are individuals that wish to speak, at this time, this is an opportunity for you to... to put your request forward. So very well, again, my apologies, now that the time is, now it's eleven thirty-six, the clerk will read the notice of the public hearing first.
The following official notice of a public hearing on the budget document of the City of Chicago for the twenty, the year 2025 was published in the Chicago Tribune on Friday, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Public notice is hereby given that the executive budget of the City of Chicago for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, was received in the office of City Clerk from Mayor Brandon Johnson on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, was submitted by the Honorable Brandon Johnson, Mayor to the City Council of City of Chicago at a City Council meeting held on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The budget document is a pamphlet form and available for inspection in the office of the City Clerk. Public notice is hereby further given that a public hearing on the executive budget will be held on Monday, December second, twenty twenty-four, at eleven thirty AM in City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh two. The City Council Chamber on second floor, any person desiring to appear at the public hearing and present testimony regards the executive budget may contact Alvin Stark, Sergeant at Arms, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, room two oh one C, three one two seven four four sixty-eight hundred, or appear and fill out a witness slip before the hearing. If you require specific language accommodations, including ASL interpreting, please email communityengagement@citychicago.org by November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Date at Chicago, Illinois, this twenty-second day, November twenty twenty-four. Andrea and Valencia, City Clerk of City of Chicago.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk. For this public hearing, there is a sign language interpreter, if there's anyone who is in need, please notify the Sergeant at Arms. Again, any person who wishes to testify on the budget, please sign one of the witness slips provided by the Sergeant at Arms. Please note specifically on your slip, the topic that you wish to address, as we will seek to group the speakers by topic. The Sergeant at Arms will collect the slips and bring them to the rostrum. We will... So how about this, we'll stand at ease just momentarily while any additional speakers are added. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. While we're about to stand at ease, if I could suspend the rules for a second to acknowledge our colleague, Alder Woman, Monique Scott, it's her birthday today while we wasting They didn't see you, you gotta stand, well, let me give an approval from the mayor first.
On the motion to suspend the rules, to take up special recognition for a particular birthday celebrant, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, the motion has passed. Alderman Moore.
Let me use my voice before I got kicked out of fellowship choir. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you, Monique.
Yay! Thank you, Mr. President.
Very well, Alderman...
Thank you, guys.
The Chair rec, it's okay, the Chair recognizes Alder Woman Scott.
I thank you for that twenty-fifth congratulatory birthday. It is a, this is a, it's always a different kind of birthday when you gotta come down to City Council, right? So can't celebrate all day, right? Because you gotta do work, but it is a, it's not guaranteed that you wake up every day. Unfortunately, I had my best friend's brother die last night, so I'm happy to be in the land of the living because some of us don't always make it. And so it is an honor and a blessing to be here. I thank God for allowing me to see fifty-three years of life. Thank you all for the congratulatory birthday.
Thank you, Alderman Moore, on the motion to return back to the regular order of business.
Make a motion to return back to the regular order of business.
All those in favor of returning back to the regular order of business signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Very well, this motion passes. All right, the Chair recognizes Alder Woman Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask to be counted as present and as yes on the first favorable roll call.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, please add Alder Woman Coleman to the roll call as well as to the favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and the subsequent motion to reconsider the failure of that motion. Thank you very much. Very well, the Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Faro.
I too like to be added as a yes vote on the first item in Committee on Finance and the subsequent motion to reconsider.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk, if you can also add Alderman Talia Faro to that roll call. The Chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Mr. President, I would also like to be recorded as a yes on the first motion of Finance.
Very well, Madam Clerk, please add Alder Fuentes to the most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and the subsequent failure of the motion to reconsider. Chair recognizes Alder Ramirez-Rosa.
Mr. President, I too would like to be added as a yes to the first motion of Finance.
This is a very dramatic scene in the movie. Madam Clerk, please add Alder Ramirez-Rosa also to the most favorable roll call vote in the Finance Committee, of course, the subsequent failure to reconsider that vote. Are there any other Alders that wish to be added to the roll call or to be recorded as? The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Sanchez.
You have to be added to the first most favorable vote, Committee on Finance.
Very well, Madam Clerk, please add Alder Woman Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez to most favorable roll call in the Committee on Finance, as well as the subsequent failure of reconsidering that vote. All right, very well. Each speaker, so today, we have so far a total of twenty-five individuals that wish to testify during this budget hearing, so we will limit each speaker to two minutes. And again, if there is any other, if there are any other speakers that wish to be added, please make sure you fill out a pink witness information slip with some specificity around your topic so that we can group them accordingly. And of course, the specificity must be related to the budget, the budget. So all testimony this morning and going into the afternoon will have to be specified, but it is relegated to the budget. And again, each speaker will have two minutes, and we have so far a total of twenty-five speakers thus far, at least. Very well, the first speaker, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you. I don't really have a ton to say other than, I once used to be proud to call myself a Chicagoan, and I was recently announced everyone's gonna get up and walk away, just fine, but we have an addiction to spending, and progressive revenue initiatives will not grow our way out of this issue. The progressive revenue tactics will fail until the necessary headcount reductions and budget cuts are made, including do not lower the speed limits to try to trap individuals and citizens for driving thirty miles an hour when the speed limit's twenty-five or whatever the proposal is. That will not work, and that will only lead to increased traffic and continue to annoy citizens. Chicago Metropolitan Water Reclamation District has a $1.6 billion budget. Five hundred million dollars of this is paid from Chicago property taxes. I'm sure there's some savings there. We have an egregiously complex and rigid form of local government. We have twenty Cook County Commissioners. Now we have twenty-one new Chicago Board of Education members. We obviously have the fifty City Council members, which we thank you, the vast majority of you. Again, progressive revenue policies will only fail and continue to exacerbate the city's financial woes. I was recently in Nashville with my wife two weeks ago, and I just randomly met four people who had moved from Chicago to Tennessee because of the tax burden. A number of my friends have moved to Colorado, they moved to Nashville, they moved to Texas. We don't want to move, but there's really no alternative. If we're just gonna continue to raise taxes, people are not gonna want to move here, or people are not gonna want to stay here, okay? The only way to get out of this, this budget crisis and insolvency is to increase the population and keep people here, encourage people to want to move here, encourage businesses to want to hire here, okay? Raising taxes does the exact opposite of that. Lastly, just don't raise, don't, please do not reduce the speed limits, that is insane. We need, if anything, we should be increasing the speed limits, the traffic is a nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you, just want to repeat again, if there are any individuals in the audience that require ASL, please let us know. Are there any members in the audience that need sign interpreters? Very well. The next speaker is Conway Tiara, Tiara Conway. All right, we'll hold off then, Tiara Conway is not here. The next speaker is David Mason. David Mason, okay, the next speaker, Jessica Jackson.
So Jesse Fuentes, you wasn't here, so real quickly, were you acting like you don't hear me? But you'll see yourself on Friday on Zoe Lee's channel, and we're gonna make you famous, and you're gonna keep acting like you don't hear me. Now, as it pertains to the budget, what I'm trying to figure out is this, how are my property taxes getting increased when you keep instructing your people to not settle my case? So you got the public administrators who are intentionally depriving me of my income because they're telling those tenants to squat on me for free for two years, but yet and still I'm getting property tax increases. And if I don't pay the property taxes by December tenth, they got the audacity to say they're gonna put my property at a tax sale, while you all are sitting there letting these people squat on me for two years. But yet, my property tax bill is three hundred dollars more than it was last quarter. Now you make that make sense, and you tell me why you should be able to stay in that, in that position, and why anybody should be able to stay in these seats. You all know what they are doing, you know what they're doing, and y'all gonna sit here and let them come after my property while y'all let some squatters per the public administration office sit in my building. You ought to be ashamed of yourself. You're supposed to be a civil rights attorney. What is it, that Conway supposed to be a prosecutor, and he ain't bothering them white judges at all? But he walk around here all smug, thinking he better than y'all because he born rich. All y'all need to be embarrassed, I hope to pray to God that whatever y'all family leave for y'all, I hope it burns to the ground.
Next speaker is George Blake Moore.
Pertaining to the budget, every household, you make so much money, and you have priorities of what you're gonna spend your money on. Now, one department that's notorious is Notorious Water Department. The Notorious Water Department, very racist, and if you don't pay your water bill, did you know they can put a lien on your property and take it? The most notorious water department, the notorious police department, the notorious police department. Now, I spoke here and been spinning this mic, and I made a statement, have you ever seen a black policeman pull his gun out and shoot a white man, a white woman, a white boy or a white girl in the United States of America? That doesn't happen. But constantly, you see white policemen say they serving protect killing a black people while walking, like in their homes. So evidently, these black policemen know their place. Uh huh, and these white policemen seem like they don't have a place. The notorious police department, let's go to the notorious fire department, only sixteen percent of the families are black. The notorious racism, the worst city in the United States, the most corrupt, is the city of Chicago. Well, why would you say this? Because how many of those so-called leaders have been indicted? Have been indicted, and they keep on keeping on. So if racism is alive here, go back to that police department again, Mr. Blake Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Blake Moore.
Okay, so I got a great way what we can, what we can do with this budget. First, let's start with cutting off illegals, getting free everything, free housing, free schooling, free food, yeah, let's start with that. That'll save us a lot of money, what, six hundred million? Let's start there. Then let's start with you, your salary. You are, you are going down in history as the worst mayor in America. Let's start with cutting yours. You making too much money, let's start there. And now let's start with the police detail you have, the two hundred police detail you have, let's start with that. Because you Democrats, and you remember you told us to defund the police? Remember, you ran on that, remember you was the defund the police? Let's start with that, let's, let's defund the, the police detail that you have. And let's put the police back in our neighborhood because we not for defunding the police. We need the police. So let's start with all the Democrats, because, because y'all policy, what y'all pushing our neighborhood, defund the police. So all y'all that got police details and got police presses around y'all house, let's start with cutting that. That'll save a lot of money. So won't you just practice what you preach? Remove all the details, we saw you coming in today, you had all the police presses. So let's take some of that away. And then let's start with not, and I'm asking you all, and I'm telling you all, Aldemans, whatever property tax hike he's proposing, or whatever taxes he's proposing on the Chicago citizens, I'm letting y'all know for real. And now, if you all vote on anything to raise all taxes or anything, because we already suffering homeowners, you all will not be in those seats.
Thank you. The next speaker is Howard Ray.
Yes, I'm back. Since people not speak, a lot of people not speak, can we raise it back up to three minutes? But here's the deal, to the Aldermans and the citizens and the council, I'm gonna talk about the People Fund again. Basically, what the People Fund is, it's a special tax for the citizens of Chicago, and what we're asking is for all sale transactions and uses that occurs, we want six cents, C-E-N-T-S, attached to those sale transactions. We estimate that there's six trillion transaction in a, in a half a year that occurs in Cook County. So you take six trillion times six cent, you get three hundred and sixty billion dollars, that's seven hundred some billion dollars a year. But that tax is solely for the citizens of Chicago. That tax will pay our property taxes, it will also fund public safety, it will also do a lot of other things for our community, because each community, community, including the suburbs, because this is a Cook County and Chicago, that's why I asked to also include Tony Preckman. Every community would be able to get a billion dollar per community, and the directors of that fund would be non-elected officials, but they would have to go through the elected officials in time, that's a whole nother subject. But what we want to do is have that special tax. You guys can keep your ten point two five, but really you guys here in Chicago is one point two five percent. You guys keep that. You guys keep that. Just add that six cent. We're willing to negotiate with you guys. Maybe you can give three cent, and the citizens give three cents to make us six cent. This is what we want. That way, everybody be satisfied. You guys can raise all what y'all want to raise for, what you need to do, but give us our six cent on every transaction that occurs in Cook County.
Thank you. The next speaker is Zoe Lee.
All right, I see that you now are flowing around a 60 million property tax hike. Ain't no taxes going to be hiked until y'all, it shouldn't be at all, but you need to settle my family's case. Like, the city of Chicago, the local government, the state of Illinois, has violated the Fifth Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment, the U.S. Constitution. That's like an oath. The government owes my family for eminent domain. Y'all sit here and ignore this. The government owes my mother. As a single black daughter, raised by a single black mother, who gave me what I needed to be down here, that's why I'm not scared. I know the Constitution, I know the federal laws. I said last year, last year, I said, this is December 13th, I said, for the last 60 days, I've sent an email to the Chicago Inspector General requesting that they look into the accounting of the 640 million dollars. The key players in the illegal immigration scheme are Carlos Ramirez Rosa, Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez, Michael Rodriguez, Andre Vasquez, Beatrice Poste Leon. As far as making Chicago great again, the black Democratic leadership in Congress showed that they have no black agenda. That's why they have allowed all this money to go to everyone but the black Americans for decades. The only way the Democrats should be voted back in is find and secure the black agenda, pass the debt, pay the debt America owes us, apologize to black Americans that say they won't try this again, and as far as locally, flip Illinois red on principle.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jasmine Smith. Jasmine Smith, very well. The next speaker is John Morrison.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you ran on being better, and I believed in you, so much so that I organized for you, I canvassed for you, and I fundraised for you. And when you won, Chicagoans entrusted you and this council to build a better, stronger, safer Chicago. You promised to build bridges instead of raising them. But over the last year, you proposed spending taxpayer money on a stadium we don't want, a massive payday loan for CPS, and in a year with record police settlement costs, you shamefully proposed further deferring the implementation of the consent decree for our police force. And for the rest of us, property taxes and service cuts. I fear you've lost the plot, Mr. Mayor. If I wanted this kind of financial mismanagement, I would have voted for that guy from Palos Heights. The Plow, the Plow the Sidewalks Chicago, the Plow the Sidewalks pilot was one of the few progressive legislative accomplishments. This pilot estimated to cost slightly more than $1 million, yet it's nowhere to be found in your current 17.3 billion dollar draft budget. That $1 million pilot represents an investment in our people and in a benefit, and a benefit by clearing our sidewalks, we can empower the elderly and disabled members of our community to live fuller and safer lives, while potentially spurring economic activity, increasing transit ridership when we do desperately need it, and reducing unnecessary injuries. It's an investment in a better, stronger, safer Chicago that you ran on, sir. But here you are, walking away from that investment. It's not too late, Mr. Mayor. I want to believe in you. I want you to prove me right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Joan or Joanne Johnson.
Brandon Johnson, I want to, you wasn't in office when this happened. We purchased insurance on our property. They came out to rebuild after a fire. They demolished the property, turned around, they put the roof up, they framed it, and they walked away. It was in zoning. Zoning was supposed to overlook this property. Building zoning, Dan, that's in the building office, and they told them to build that property the, the way I wanted it to be built. The insurance money walked away. I got signatures, I got documents of everybody that's involved in this project. And Nationland Justice, they were supposed to build it up, but they walked away from it. So now it's just a dump, it's abandoned. We did everything we were supposed to do, we paid our insurance, and they took our insurance money. And why? The zoning department was supposed to overlook the project, and they didn't. I went into court, they told me to get a lawyer. My lawyer tell me, you dealing with the city of Chicago? You fucked. We did everything we were supposed to do. We did everything we were supposed to do. And they turned around and walked away with 300 some thousand dollars.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dennis White.
Brandon Johnson, the good news is, we got 48 days before Trump take that oath. In January, ICE going to come in and get rid of these illegal immigrants. Here's the thing, in order for us to get these taxes, we got to get rid of these illegals. So this what's going to happen to you. You got Cash Patel and Pam Bundy that you're going to have to deal with sooner than later. Then it's going to be an audit. Next, it's going to be an investigation. Then it's going to be an indictment.
Well, that's how you do it. Oh, I like that. Oh, my God. I like that. That's bad.
Convention. That's what's going to happen to you. Now, guess what? I just cooked them under two minutes.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vashon Tonkel.
Good morning to the people of Chicago. I just want to say, Mr. Brandon Johnson, I'm up here. I am speaking right now, so I would love your undivided attention, please. I'll wait. So this just proves to you the lack of leadership that you show in this city. You can't even give me straight eye contact. Now, I'm going to let you know now, the people of Chicago, we're done with you. I'm young, I'm a young black man here in Chicago, Illinois, and I'm here to tell you that I've seen what the Democratic Party have done to my people, specifically black people. Now, it is insane how we have been voting Democrat for over 60-plus years, and we've never seen a change from people like you, Lori Lightfoot, Rob Emanuel. It is insane. Now, when it comes to the budget, why would you want to get rid of, excuse me, Shotspotters, which is a 36 to 49 million dollar investment in, in communities that are basically suffering from gun violence? I support blue troops, I support the police, they protect us, and you want to defund the police, you and the Democrats. Now, I know you guys see my Trump hat. You know that Chicago is flipping red. Chicago was 37% red. In 2020, it was only 15%. So we're waking up. So you can pretend that this isn't happening, but I know for a fact that you will not have that seat the next election. And at this point, Brandon Johnson, you can race bait all you want, you guys can sit up here and call me Uncle Tom because I got my Trump hat on, but here's the thing, if you guys never read Uncle Tom, Uncle Tom, he died not telling on two runaway slaves. But you know who will sell you out in a minute? This guy right here. So you can call me Uncle Tom all you want, but one thing you can't call me is a damn Democrat.
Well, that's how you do it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scarlett Johnson. Scarlett Johnson, very well. Our next speaker, Robert Castle Jr. Robert Castle Jr. Good morning.
My name is Robert Castile Jr. So after years of being incarcerated and having my voice snatched, I'm blindly able to speak. So even being inside of sales and things and trying to write about things and certain stuff, and having things being denied and mail tampered with and not be able to do that, I'm here to be able to speak about different things that happens in the city and contributes to different subjects and negative effects that turn out in the city. For instance, education. I truly believe in education, I believe in the children, I believe they are the future. We need them to survive and to thrive and to grow forward with the closing of schools and just not funding the education or the teachers that are needed to teach them to grow, to be fruitful, to produce for our society, to make us better. I almost definitely do not agree with that. They need to be funded, they need to be given what they need to protect and allow the children to grow. When you have a classroom that's overcrowded, you have children that are not being paid attention to and some that can't receive that attention and that support or that certain manner or method that they need in order to be nourished mentally. So when that happens, some of them become disruptive, and when they become disruptive, they can't receive the education so that they can grow and do what they need to do. When you don't receive the proper education, and it comes time to fill out job applications or whatever it may be, or higher education or whatever it may be, then you're just not able to, which leads you down a certain path where, when schools are closed and everything else, the block is never closed, the hood is never closed. You can always go out on those corners, there's always somebody that ready to teach you the street trade. So when they learn these trades, it's with them. Even inside of that, that's why I support the education of the students and not having crowded classrooms when it comes to...
Next speaker, Ms. P. Ray Eastly.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening to the city of Chicago, to the city council, to the mayor, to my alderman of the great 37th ward, and to all the Westsiders in the building. First things first, I didn't, I had a whole different thing, but I want to say this very quickly. I am a Negro woman. My mother and my father are Negro people. My grandmother is a Negro woman. Their birth certificates out of Cook County, their original ones say Negro. It was printed on the Cook County birth certificates before 1975. Please respect the label and our American ethnicity. We don't have problems identifying anybody else, we will not play about the Negro. But I came here to say this. Typically, I'm here and I'm fussing. I want to say thank you to the city council. I want to say thank y'all for voting down that $300 million. Thank you for saving us $300 million. Thank you for saying no to 150 million. And we want y'all to say no to the 60 million. You all did not get enough hand claps, enough support, enough love. Know that the whole country was clapping and proud of the work of this city council, because our mayor is embarrassing us, y'all, around the world. And you all took the power back from him to say, the city of Chicago is out of the business of funding illegals. We are out of the business of prioritizing non-American citizens on top of the American citizens who go out in this cold weather every day to make money to pay their taxes. So I want to encourage you guys to please say, America first. Please continue to make our city look like the great city that it is, because we are great people with good sense. One thing that Chicago people know very well is how to spot a scam. And the scam has been exposed. You cannot bully Chicago people, because this is a city of bullies and bully slayers. So today, I encourage you guys to help us slay the bully. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Nelson.
Hi, Mayor Johnson. Thank you, folks, for taking the time to hear our comments today. I'm Alex Nelson, I'm the Strategy Advisor for Better Street Chicago. Some of you folks have met me before, many of you have not, but I think a lot of you have heard the campaign I've been managing for the past couple of years now, Plow the Sidewalks. We are seeking to make sidewalks snow and ice removal a universal municipal service here in the city of Chicago. It would make us a trailblazer and a leader in our infrastructure. For the past year and a half, Mr. Mayor, we've been working with various city officials, including Commissioner Cole Stollard from Department of Streets and Sanitation, Commissioner Tom Carney from Chicago Department of Transportation, as well as other numerous officials, both from aldermanic offices, from your department, from your administration, and city advocates and organizers who come here either on their free time or, in my case, take PTO days. And we've been doing it and developing this pilot because we believe in it, because we understand that sidewalks are the most universal, universal and accessible infrastructure, infrastructure that this city has. Every single person in this room, regardless of their political allegiance, regardless of whether they're an elected official, a journalist, an organizer, just a constituent here with concerns, every single person uses the sidewalks. And so when we make sure to prioritize the most accessible and tangible infrastructure that every person in the city has access to, it shows who we care about. It shows that we care about the elderly, the disabled, folks with children, folks without access to cars. You campaigned on Plow the Sidewalks. We've been working and developing this pilot, we're incredibly proud of it. And so I'm going to ask you to see it through and make sure that you include the $1 million budget line for the pilot in this upcoming budget season. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kyle Lucas.
Greetings, City Council, Mayor Johnson. My name is Kyle Lucas, I'm the Executive Director of Better Street Chicago, and I want to read a statement on behalf of some of the organizations that were part of the working group for the Plow the Sidewalks Pilot Program. In May, the city of Chicago released the Plow the Sidewalks Pilot Program Recommendations Report outlining a year's worth of work by advocates alongside the city to develop a feasible pilot program for municipal sidewalk snow and ice removal. This was a profound step forward in the years-long Plow the Sidewalks campaign, providing a clear roadmap and outline for the city to begin the steps of implementation. Unfortunately, since then, the city has missed key deadlines for implementation and has failed to provide the necessary funding in the Chicago Department of Transportation's budget to move the pilot forward. While the city faces significant challenges, eliminating this pilot program does not meaningfully address those challenges. Instead, it perpetuates the continued neglect of the needs of people with disabilities, seniors, parents with children, and beyond to participate in society when it snows. This means Chicagoans will continue to be unable to run errands, go to the doctor, buy groceries, and otherwise participate in our economy and in their communities, oftentimes left trapped at home for days until the snow clears or melts. A budget is a statement of values, and by continuing to delay implementation, the city is sending a message that it sees the status quo as acceptable. We find the status quo as wholly unacceptable. We are not the first to do this, and we know that this is possible, and we are not asking for the sky. We are asking for a small pilot program to study this and to show what happens. Advocates are here, we are willing to work with you if you will come to the table with us to identify the solutions to make this happen. But we must make it clear, the time to fund Plow the Sidewalks is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kimberly Saunders.
Good afternoon, Mayor Brandon and all constituents.
My name is Kimberly Saunders, I am a developer, Treasure Service, Inc. I purchased property with my money, nobody else's money, I rehab it with my money. Wintrust has granted me a ten mil- ten million dollar line of credit because I do a lot of business with my godfather, took me there, the Italians, and they granted me this credit about a week ago. I'm asking you to do a pilot program where I want to, as I told you, I'm tired of this, that Inglewood South Side looking like the projects. When you go over to Lincoln Park, these situations should be equal right now. You have nothing to do with this, Brandon. You remember me, I sued CHA and won with the PPP. I asked you to help me then and you see the federal government won with me. So I think you need to know, I got the feds and everybody like messing with me. So I'm asking if I could do a program where they're gonna give me the money to build, I have a couple of other black men that's developing in the city using their money, and we are willing to do some of these projects, fund them, and then we get a pilot and we're gonna leave equity in there because we're not gonna charge them the, the full market price. So if we did something like that, that could bridge the gap of generational wealth, all of this that's going on, you just need to talk to people like me and stop being in the in-crow because I'm not in the in-crow. And I'm the deputy of the twenty-seventh ward, which I was appointed by the Republican Party because they asked me to run against Burnett. I didn't want to run. I don't want to do y'all job, you don't make enough money. But I want to help the community because I'm tired of my side. Well, I don't even live over there, I'm in the twenty-seventh over there, whatever, I'm a part of Chicago, south and west side, but I grew up in Bronzeville. And again, I told you, my grandmother worked for President, my grandfather worked for President Kennedy, my grandmother worked for Hillary Washington. Again, I have the lineage, the paperwork, the background, and the name that could take the take, but I like to deal with the drug dealers, the hustlers, the crackheads, the misfits, and I help them. So it's like, y'all don't mess with me because my kids got put out of British because of one of y'all, them Winnie Tollin people. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, good afternoon, um, City Council, good afternoon, Chicago residents. My name is Giovanna Alvarez. I'm an immigrant, first generation, and I was very lucky to have an education here in the United States and became a very productive citizen. Nowadays, I am very, very concerned on what's happening on the city. I understand the budget is the bottom line of the concerns that we have, but I can also see a lot of miscommunication, a lot of dysfunctioning. How can we access, how can we prepare a budget? How can we become effective if we cannot communicate with each other? There's a lot of sensitivity, there's a lot of fear, there's a lot of anger. So Mayor, I would like to ask you to please consider everyone within the budget. Like I said, I'm an immigrant, I came to the United States legally, I was very fortunate to do that. I have never been a delinquent, and I am very, very embarrassed for what my other fellow Latin American citizens are doing in the city. On behalf of the people that work, on behalf of the people that pay taxes, on behalf of the people that contribute to the city, I'd like to make clear that not everyone is the same. These people came with a wide door open and they feel entitled to many things that nobody has. There's US, there are US citizens suffering from poverty, there are US citizens on public aid, and these people are here just enjoying the benefits, becoming delinquents, and they have no consequences. Same thing with the youth in Chicago. You talk a lot about the youth. Well, let me tell you, I have a daughter, was a university student, she's doing her third degree. She was at the Christmas celebration two, three weeks ago, and she had the most horrible experience ever. I really thought I was going to lose my daughter out of that experience. What are we doing? Where's my money going? I'm a contributor to the city, I'm a productive person, I want you to do the same, and please live by example.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on the proposed executive budget? If there aren't any others that wish to speak on the proposed executive budget, uh, the time is now twelve twenty. This does conclude our public hearing on the proposed executive budget. The chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we return back to the regular order of business.
On the motion to return to the regular order of business, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed say no. The motion passes. On the motion to adjourn, the chair recognizes, oh, the chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Mr. President, I was just, uh, calling to see if I could, uh, actually be recorded with, uh, as quorum and most, um, and vote, favorable vote, uh, as a aye, please.
Yes, please, uh, Mr. Clerk, please add Alderman Curtis, uh, as present, a part of the roll call, and as an aye, vote for the most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and the subsequent reconsideration of that vote that failed. Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, at the conclusion of this meeting, uh, Committee on Budget and Government Operations will resume probably about fifteen minutes after, to allow the clerk to set up, I know our time to start was at twelve. Uh, we're gonna start, you know, shortly thereafter, after we all get set up, unless you all want to have a break and come back later. Good. You like a break? Okay. Everybody want a break? Everybody want a break? Break, break. All right, we will come back then at, uh, one thirty. We'll start at one thirty.
All right, very well. Thank you, Chairman Irvin. On the motion to adjourn, the chair recognizes Alderman Mitro.
Further business for this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered, this meeting is adjourned.